All right, thank you everyone for coming down on such a lovely day.
It is right now.
Yeah.
Certainly wasn't earlier.
We have one addition to tonight's agenda.
Well, Mr. Chairman, technically I can't even say that right now. I'll have to start off by making a motion that we reelect Michael Cloption as the chairman of the select board.
Second.
I forgot all about that. All right, the motion made and seconded, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, now, thank you, Brad.
You're welcome. And I also make a motion that George Ambrose serve, if he's willing, another term as the clerk of the board.
I'll second it.
I'll third it. Okay, all who's in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
And before you jump in, Mr. Chairman, I think we should just publicly state that the road commissioner is still out plowing due to the fact that we had three trucks break down in the last two days. And Mr. Menard has a personal issue he's dealing with, so.
Okay, thanks for the update. Ashley, are you gonna speak to us about those trucks? Do you have that information or?
I do not.
I have the information.
Oh, you do, okay.
I was, yeah, the road commissioner called me today.
Okay, good.
I do have that.
All right. Now, let's try the addition of the agenda. How does that pass?
The passive.
Yeah, passive, all right. Grant application, updated, it needs to be signed, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we add that under new business tonight.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And just write it down. Any other agenda additions or deletions? Are you hearing none? Approval of the regular minutes from February 12th.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Are you hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Highway, you want to speak to that?
So I did get a phone call from the road commissioner about an hour ago. We are down three trucks, so they are finishing up the current storm with the one ton. He's nervous because it is the three big ones that are down all at once. It looks like we don't have any weather until the end of the week, so that's at least good. And hopefully it's not going to be anything major as far as ice goes, because it looks like it's going to be warm enough. One truck is down with broken leaf springs. We've got another truck down that has, the Western Star has a few issues that actually, it got taken up north, I think on Friday, Thursday or Friday, yep. And then the other truck is not as big of an issue, and that one is going to be back on the road within the next day or so.
That's the sand link.
And the sand link went in one of the trucks, so the chains went, so. Or a piece of the chain went. So that's the update, they're doing the best they can. He said that they should be finished up, hopefully here in the next hour or so. But they're slow going right now, so.
Is there any question from?
Well, I knew something was wrong when Rutland Town had plowed their end of the road and we weren't plowed yet.
Yeah, unfortunately, and he did say, when I, when he called me, he said he was working his way towards borderline, so.
Wasn't a big deal, but it was just like.
Mystery.
That didn't happen before, let's just.
How much snow did you guys get over on your side there?
Right, close to six inches.
I was gonna say, we heard about six.
Yeah, that's what we, yeah, with the two storms, that's why I got up in the yard too.
There was things they could have done. You know, I know trucks are broke down, but you got, you got a new half million dollar grader down there, it can grade, it can still plow snow off a road. You know, don't have a wing on it, but it'll still plow snow. We used to plow snow for hours and hours and years and years with a grader and everything else, but I don't think it left the yard today. And stuff, there's, there's some issues down there that need to be dealt with. I mean, I don't want to be, this is another question I got, do we have a road foreman or do we have a road commissioner?
It's supposed to be road commissioner. Now, the problem with the grader is, the new grader, the guys are just breaking into the use of that. But it's, when the, the dirt roads are all loose and it's shifting a lot of dirt off to the side of the roads. And I think that's, until they get used to utilizing that piece of equipment, I think that's one of the issues.
No, I'm, I'm not going to agree with you on that one, Mike, because he's done pretty well at grading out stuff on the, on the roads where there's muddy issues and stuff.
Yeah.
Hasn't graded too much off the side of the road. Joe Baker's a pretty clever fellow with a, with a grader and everything else, so. Like I say, we got some issues down there that need to really be dealt with and everything, so. And I, I don't want the job, I want to help with the job.
Yeah. Eddie was saying the same kind of thing, but we'll see where this goes. We'll have some discussion in an executive session, probably not too long from now.
Well, the reason I brought up the road foreman and the road commissioner, I think my wife brought it up on somewhere that, I think it says somewhere in the state statutes that if you're a commissioner, you're an elected official, and if you're, if you're
Road foreman.
If you're a person that's, that's put in by, by, you know, a board, then you're a road foreman. I've heard it for all the meetings I've been here, three or four times a night, he's the road commissioner, and three or four times a night, he's a road foreman. So I have a question.
A while, a while back, was a couple of elections ago, is when we asked the voters in town.
Right, yeah.
They didn't have an issue with us.
Yeah, and I agree with it. I, I think it's a great idea and everything else, just I think we, we need to get it right, is he the road foreman or is he the road commissioner?
Technically, the statute of the town got changed that he was road commissioner, we had an appointed road commissioner, because we went through Secretary of State for that when we did it.
Plus, we had some information from leagues as well.
Yeah.
In my city and leagues.
If things have changed since, then we need to check into it, yeah.
All right, anything else? Okay, approval of the select board warrants?
George wants to pass them this way, I haven't had them yet, if he's, if he's signed them, yeah.
Yeah, we all signed them.
Thank you.
And if anybody from the public wants to check that out, go for it. Barbara?
Yes.
Would you like to speak?
I would, thank you. Yeah, I don't want to take up too much of your time tonight, I'm with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Barbara Neispulling. Every eight years, it's kind of similar to the town plan, but every eight years, we do a regional plan. And that looks at our 27 communities. And, you know, looks, looks at how things are going currently and tries to predict some future activity or things like that. This time around, we're, we would like as much input from our towns as possible. And the first part of that is a survey. Now, I don't know if you've got these cards, there were some in the town clerk's office. Use the QR code to get it, or there's a website underneath the QR code. And if you flip it over, there's a, there's a prize.
We'll hand these out to the rest of the board.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, as many people who can fill out, there are 30 questions there. But the 30 questions cover everything that, that we do for our communities, you know, whether it's transportation, water quality, yeah, any, anything, any of those things. So we, we have a couple of years to work on this, much like a town plan, you, you start a year or two ahead. So this is the first part, as I mentioned, the survey's open until the end of the month.
So March 31st, then, for this, okay.
Yep. And it would be great if we could get some input, we've been keeping track of who's been taking it. I think Clarendon's about halfway there. Getting, getting a number that is big enough.
Big enough number you're looking for?
Yes, well, 1.6% of the population. And then Clarendon, I think it was, I think we need maybe like 20 more.
Okay.
At 48 total, something like that.
How do, how do you get on this? I don't, you know, I'm not.
If you don't, if you don't want to use the QR code on your computer, Mike, you can punch that in.
This, okay.
Do you want Clarendon residents on that also?
Absolutely.
Because I filled one out for the bike part of it. I got, I'm not sure, I think Ethan sent it to.
Okay.
So.
All 30 questions or just bike questions?
It seemed like there were a lot of questions, whether or not there were 30, I don't know, because it's been a while since I filled it out.
Yeah.
Do you have any extra of those cards with you? Or maybe Mike might share one of those.
Mike's got one there, yeah.
Yeah.
I did put them at the post office also, and there's a thing on the wall there.
That means I gotta go to Clarendon Post Office.
Know anything about Post Office? Thank you. Anybody else want some, but?
Well, there was.
Yeah. I just want to make sure the other.
I'll share this, because I'll scan the QR code now.
Okay, so instead of us just doing all of it, we'd like, we'd like your say. I think, you know, you have a lot of the answers to what we're planning for. We've had some pop-up events in each of the towns, and we've got some community events that are coming up. There's five in the region, and we're just, we're all ears.
As to your knowledge, anybody from our planning commission filled out any of these?
I don't know names, but I wouldn't be surprised.
Did, did we know of John McKenna, he's the chair of that now, right?
I can send it to him.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that would be important, because, you know, they're first on the block, so I think that we should have them involved with it, so.
Cool, thanks for coming, Barbara.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
If you have any questions, yeah, that's it.
Now, it's the long walk to the door. You're welcome to stay if you.
I'm doing the ag section, so I'd love to do something on the fair.
Okay.
On the regional plan.
Okay, we can, drop me an email.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Thank you.
No, thank you for coming, appreciate it.
We thought you were gonna leave.
Any public comments? All right, anything under old business that's come up since this, nothing?
Thank you.
Have a safe trip on.
Thank you.
Make sure you got sunglasses.
They're in the car.
All right, new business, tax sale, minimum bid. We have some information here from Corsoans, but do you want to speak to this?
Again, sure. So we had five properties that we put up for tax sale. Two of the five have since actually gone in and paid their total in full, which is two that I believe we were going to be most worried about. So luckily, those are taken care of, tax sales are happening on April 8th. And there's three remaining, and we've had a lot of interest in them already. So it's just approving the minimum bids from Corsoans on that.
Is there anyone still out there that's?
A lot.
If there is, okay. So you're staying on top of that.
This cleans up the oldest, right, Ashley?
The oldest, yeah.
You're, you're kind of working your way as far back and then current?
Yes, yep.
I don't want to give out names, but how long have these been on our list?
Some since 2017.
Looking for a motion, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I move that we approve the guarantee of a minimum bid for the sales, tax sales that are listed on the.
For the three?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
And, and I would agree with you, Ashley, I think that from my perspective, the two that are no longer are probably the two that we would have had the most discussion about. So that's good, that's good.
All right, been motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, too. All right, anyone opposed? Doesn't look like it.
So April 8th, then, is what?
Yes, 1 o'clock.
You're doing it here, right?
Yep.
All right, Vermont Digital Town Server.
Sorry, can I just ask one more question? What do you foresee as far, I mean, is everybody else, do you see another batch coming kind of behind this one relatively quickly, or are you thinking?
So this whole process started in August of last year, and it's just happening, so there's really.
I know it takes time.
Yeah, it does, like, I was surprised.
Yeah.
So hopefully, the next batch will go a little bit smoother, I think mostly, like, when people start seeing that, you know, that we're actually doing these again, that maybe the notices that I'm sending out will be, you know, attended to a little quicker.
I was gonna say, there's a, there's incentive, yeah.
Right, so let's hope that, you know, moving forward, we won't have to go crazy on some. I'm working with V L C T, I sent V L C T a email in regards to some lingering things that we have going on that we need to look at, so hopefully I'll have more to report on that within a month or so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Nice work, yes.
Thank you.
All right, Vermont Digital Town Server Replacement. I was talking with Gloria about that today, can you update us, you or Heidi?
Heidi, I would love if you could update that a little better than I can. So our server has been starting to fail us, and I'm not sure on the exact date of when the last time. I'm not sure how old this one is, I do know there is some age to it. It hasn't been replaced since I've been here.
I'm sure.
And the, we looked at replacing it during the COVID years, and the price on that was over, well over $6,000. We have since gotten another quote, just because we are starting to have some of those server issues, and it's no longer, actually, it's not even supported anymore. So if it really does kick off altogether on us, then we're gonna kind of beat up the creek. Anyways, the quote that we got is half of what it was during COVID times, so.
Is that because of a slot, supply and demand issue, or?
Yes, sir.
That I suspect.
And I think after talking with Gloria earlier today, that she is pretty, think that we should be proactive about replacing that thing as soon as possible.
I think so as well. So while it's not a budgeted expense, you do have $2,600 available in your contingency fund to use on that. And if you want to take the difference out of either the office system supports and upgrades, you can certainly do that. There is only a couple of hundred dollars left in that budget for this year. You do have a little bit of money in your selectmen expenses as well. My personal opinion on it would be to, would be to use up the rest of your contingency funds, and then book the rest of the expense to that office system supplies and upgrades, because that's technically where that expense would have lived to begin with.
I certainly have no objections to that plan, I would move that we take steps to purchase the necessary equipment and get it done.
I'll second that, with the, so your, your motion is just to do as she suggested, take it out of that software line and then the rest out of contingency?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm good with that, I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, obviously not. Okay. All right, M R G P Annual Report sign off.
Is this the, I'm assuming, I'm looking at you, Ashley, this is the annual, just what projects we did and what are coming, or is this just the?
This is just saying that we're compliant and did what we were supposed to do, yep.
So I'll make a motion that the board chairman sign off on the M R G P update, annual report.
I'll second.
All right, is there any further discussion?
Well, only that I just learned today that there's some money attached to this as well, and I had a discussion rather incredibly talented treasurer about that, and I said, well, I learn something new all the time, because I realize we did this, but I didn't realize that there was a fee involved, which is a pretty hefty one in my mind.
It is, so the check that will go with that is $1,350, and that is an annual permit fee that we have to pay that goes along with the municipal roads general permit. So not only do we have to submit this annual report to them, to tell them that we're in compliance with working towards bringing up all of our roads to their standards, but we are also paying that fee for a permit.
Oh, and it's not optional. Oh, by the way.
So basically, you're paying a thousand dollars to file a piece of paper.
Yeah.
Yes, pretty much.
Yep.
Just checking.
Welcome to the state of Vermont.
And every so many years, when it's up for renewal at the legislative level, they also tack on another fee of a couple hundred dollars when it's, it's a processing fee, when this permit is up for renewal itself, so we have.
And it's all done electronically, that's.
Yes.
Well, I mean, it's all, it's always open for some town citizen to volunteer to pay that, right?
Sure is.
I guess I won't hold my breath on it, but what the heck.
All right, the motion made and seconded. We've had some discussion, is there any further discussion from the public? Are you hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, let me sign this.
While you're signing, Mr. Chairman, the passive grant, of course, is for safety items, and it looks like we've got some signs that we're going to be purchasing with that grant, and items for the road crew, in the total of 2,867, 12. Is this the one that has a match, or is that just outright, they give it to us?
No, it was a 50, and we did get awarded that, so we do, well, we haven't actually gotten it yet, but we were approved for it.
Okay.
It's just the road crew wanted to update the quantities of what was being purchased.
Yeah, I did see that.
So. That's the change.
So we're approved, we just got to sign the paperwork.
Yep, 50, 50%.
50%, okay, so I'll make a motion that the board chairman sign the passive grant on our behalf.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, obviously not. All right, Heidi, you want to give us a report?
I actually don't have anything else for you tonight.
Ashley?
I also don't have anything else.
Wow, that's a tough one.
Is there anything else, would you like to throw something at us, Kevin? No?
Everything's going smooth, we're plugging all the way on our evaluations and waiting to start hearing back on reassessing proposals.
How many visits did you go on this morning?
None. We've got basically all the outdoor ones done, though, but it's now, you know, who wants someone traipsing through their house?
Yeah, that's true.
All right, Rob?
I do not have any.
I do have a couple of things, it shouldn't take us more than an hour, an hour and a half, I think. First thing, I would like to compliment Gloria and the team of election officials that were here, keeping everything going, chugging along. I did have some questions from a couple of people about how legal is it to bring in cards and slips of paper to the voting booth? And my first response was that if Gloria approved it, that it was probably legal. And then I went and looked up the statutes on it, and what I learned was it is legal to bring into the voting place cards, a brochure, a slip of paper, to assist the voter in casting their ballot. And that they are also supposed to take it with them when they leave the polling place. And furthermore, nothing should be left so that it would be visible for anybody else to see whatever material was brought in. So that was what the statutes say. Now, I did notice when I came for the ballot counting, I don't know if Robert, or, what's your name again, a mic? I noticed that there were a few of them around that, I guess, had been left, and when I went to vote, I was over there on one of those little cardboard things, and there was one on the table, one of the cards that were brought in. So I guess the other part of the statute said that some voting person, official person, should be picking them up from time to time, so that's all I know.
So I can speak to it.
Oh, good.
Because I did stand and warm up by the food fiddle's table over in the corner for a little while. And I do know that, I'm not sure about Ashley, but I can speak to Gloria was coming over and regularly picking up.
Checking them out.
It wasn't, I mean, she wasn't behind every person.
Yeah.
But I know while I was standing in here, at least twice, I heard her say, oh, I gotta go do another lap and make sure cards are picked up, so.
Well, that's good.
She was, she was actively, I think, seeking to stay on top of it, from my perspective.
I mean, personally, I don't see anything wrong with it, we just made, make sure that we're following the rules.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, and no, and like I say, from, from my perspective, when I was in here, she was actively making laps and, and picking them up.
Well, that's good.
She did bring, she brought cards back out to Cash and to Carol.
Carol, here, yeah.
I did hand out just a few that I had in the beginning of the day, but she was, and she did make this statement to them that, I think she said that it was all right for them to bring them from people to, for them to hand them out, but more for write-in people, so they could remember or spell names properly for a write-in, is the way she stated it, to us three, that four that were standing outside the door.
Well, good, thank you. I'm, I'm done.
I have one thing I just want to make everybody aware of, I forgot about this, but.
Oh, I did have one thing, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The, those polling booths that we have, they're falling apart big time. And it was suggested, I think Art brought it up, Mike Pedone brought it up, about trying to ask Gloria, maybe you folks, those tables that we have, the round tables, see if we can't get a couple more of those.
Oh, you're talking about the ones that have four?
Yeah, yeah.
Four, okay.
Yeah, those have worked pretty well, actually.
The thing is, is setting them up, just if you get only one of them, it replaces that whole wall.
Yes, it would.
All four. That's true, it would replace the whole wall, yeah, one more of them.
Give them more space in here as well. But over the years, those things are starting.
It's getting tired.
Yeah, those things are starting to fall apart, but.
Well, we used to haul them up to the elementary school, but I'm not gonna haul them back.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they've had a lot of use.
I'm starting to run out of electric tape.
You gotta go back to work.
I'll with G E M P, but that's another story. All right.
I had to go go write them.
Okay.
Reporting on my efforts to talk to the other three towns on the school consolidation questionnaire that we've talked about a couple of times, I have heard back from all three towns, and where we're, where it stands right now is that I'm going to send out an invitation for member, people from each of the three towns to join us, probably at the school, and I'll get the superintendent or the chair of the board, and we would start thrashing out what would be on the questionnaire, so that's where we're at.
And you, we're still thinking like November for that?
Yes, because.
That's gonna be the better turnout.
Yeah, I think so. So that's where I am on that, and so far, so good.
Our board, select board, will wait to hear back from you.
Yes.
Our representative.
Yep.
Going to these meetings.
Yep.
All right, anybody else have anything else? All right, anybody else have anything else?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of the motion to adjourn? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks, for coming down.